We want to welcome you to the Mayor and City Council Inauguration Day. This is August 11th. What a wonderful day for the city of Fayetteville. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Gilbert Bays. And contrary to popular belief, I am not the mayor of Fayetteville, although I have played the mayor on television. On behalf of the city of Fayetteville, we are very pleased to have all of you here with us tonight. At this time, we want the Police and Fire Department's Honor Guard Team to post the colors. We would like for those of you who can to please stand and remain standing for the posting of the color, the National Anthem, and also the invocation.
Sir, the colors are four. Permission to post the colors?
Post the colors.
Sir. Color commanders, post your colors. March on, march! Full. Left, face. Present, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? Nor the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Nice round of applause there for Sametris McKenney.
Colors, post. Right, face. Forward, march.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for the invocation. It's going to be given to us by Reverend Dr. Carl Brinkley, Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Gracious God, our Father, each of us in our own way and from our own traditions would invoke your presence to be here with us tonight as we gather for this solemn and significant occasion. In your wisdom, loving God, you have set us within families and you have gathered families into communities and communities that divine to make us a strong state and nation. We are thankful for the people of this, of the communities of Fayetteville, North Carolina. And we are grateful for these individuals that have come forward to serve in elected positions on their behalf. We pray your blessings on Mitch Colvin, Kathy Jensen, Shaquilla Ingram, Mario Benevente, DJ Hair, Johnny Dawkins, Derek Thompson, Brenda McNair, Courtney Banks McLaughlin, and Dino Hondros as they take the oath of office tonight. With these solemn words comes public trust, so we pray that you would confirm them and give them a commitment to what is true, to what is right, and what is fair. Endow them with both wisdom and humility and inspire them that they may lead us in a renewing of the ties of mutual respect to which form our civic life. Fill us all with a renewed commitment to work for the people of our city. Deliver us from the political pessimism that so affects our age. Keep us attuned to the highest standards of public service. Grant us the vision to work, the goals and purposes larger than ourselves. And give us energy and zeal to carry out this vision and to carry it forward. Blessed are you, oh Lord, our God, for you have set us within this community and called us all to promote the common good. Let it all be done, sir. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Everyone, please be seated. Dr. Brinkley, thank you very much for those inspiring words. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, it's about the business of the city. This is not going to take much time and we're going to get through it, but we'd like to remind all of the City Council members and the mayor, after you take your oath of office, you have time to make some remarks. This is not a City Council meeting. We're not going to be here till 11 o'clock, but we could be. One important thing that the city clerk pointed out, we want to remind you that after you take your oath, please go to the table and make sure you sign your document there because at that point, then you are officially in office. At this time, we'd like to ask Mayor Colvin to please step forward and receive your oath of office. It will be administered by the Honorable Anita Earls, North Carolina Supreme Court Associate Justice.
If you would place your left hand on the Bible, please, and raise your right and repeat after me. I, Mitchell Colvin, do solemnly swear.
I, Mitchell Colvin, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
As mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Wow, well, good evening. Thank you so much to all of you who've joined us tonight. But first and foremost, let me say thank God for providing this opportunity for me to serve the great people of this city again. Truly with him, without him, none of this would have been possible, but with him, certainly all things are possible. So again, thank you. Special thanks to Justice Anita Earls and her family for joining us tonight for such a beautiful and momentous and special occasion. Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to come and to render the oath of office. I greatly appreciate that. To all of the elected officials, if you could, just stand for a moment or raise your hand. All elected officials, just so we can acknowledge your presence, just to make sure that we don't overlook anyone. Can we give them a round of applause? So thank you so much. And to the special ladies and people in my life, to my beautiful daughters, to Portia who joined onstage, and Ashley, and Maya for the first time in the last decade since I've sworn public office is not with us tonight. She's joining us remotely from the dorm at Spelman, so this is truly a different experience for me in that regard. But thank you to my daughters for allowing your dad to serve this community, this city, sacrificing family time and quality time and for all what comes with public office. Certainly, the families are part of that service. To my mother, Ms. Elva Colvin, thank you so much. Words cannot express the gratitude for the hard work and sacrifice that you and my late father, Henry Colvin Sr., gave to me and my brothers and sisters in the guidance. But most of all, instilling in us the principles and the work ethic that it took to make us prepared for this world that we're in today. Thank you to Dr. Tamar Bryant for being a great confidant and a source of support as well. Thank you to my brother Michael and to Sister Zakiya and to my brothers and sisters in their absence, to Ronnie and Sheila and Bonnie. Thank you. I know that they join us in spirit tonight. Next, I would like to thank an amazing campaign team, Team Colvin. Can you all raise your hand? Thank you so much for tireless work and effort. Can we give them and the other others in this, other people who have participated and sacrificed time knocking on doors and making sure that the community participated in a democratic process of elections, regardless of the outcome, regardless of who the candidate? Elections are very important to the operation of our government and to our nation. But thank you so much for sacrificing time from your families and working in hot conditions to continue to stand behind a campaign. And thank you for tonight's success. It's certainly dedicated to you. I'd like to briefly thank my staff members at Colvin Funeral Home and Affordable Cremations for allowing me to be able to serve. Thank you for taking care of our clients and our business while I serve our community. But most of all, thank you to the voters of this great city. Thank you for pressing your way out in the hot sun, the heat, the rain. Thank you for reminding family members and friends and your children to go and vote. Truly, you are the reason why I stand behind this podium today. And tonight, I stand before you humbled and excited for together we've made history. Because of you, I am now officially the longest-serving African-American mayor in the city of Fayetteville. And because of you, the voters, we have seen a tremendous expansion in the diversity of the leadership of this city. I said in 2017, when I took the oath of office for the first term, our diversity is our strength. And although it's hard to believe that it's been five years since I stood on this stage and took the office, the oath of office as mayor for the first time, things have changed. New faces have replaced familiar ones. I would like to acknowledge some of my colleagues on council that are no longer on this new council, but first of all, the late Bill Krist, who served as a mentor, as a father figure, and as a true guide to this city. Thank you to the former colleagues Larry Wright and Chris Davis and those who have served, Yvonne Kinston, those who have served well during this last term. I thank you for your service to this community. And just as seasons change, so do the people in our lives. And I would like to congratulate all of our new colleagues who will be coming forth shortly to take the new oath of office and to begin this journey together. I look forward to working with you and accomplishing great things for our city and our community. And to our fellow citizens, let's be reminded that our journey is not complete. I would like to take you for a moment, just again, to 24 months before the last oath of office, Harvard University had just concluded a national study where it studied the 100 largest cities in America called Pathways to Prosperity. The study revealed devastating details about our community, its policies, and we ranked 100 out of 100 cities in the nation for the highest poverty rate. A child born in our community had a greater chance of being more impoverished than his parents. Who accepts that in a developed prosperous society that we have? So in 2017, we chartered a course to change the dynamics and the statistics. We changed our city's approach and our view on equity and equality. I fundamentally believe that although government is not the answer to all of society's problems, it's supposed to use its resources to level the playing field for all of its citizens. Myself and other council members have worked to change the city's perspective and approach. We demanded policies of fairness and participatory programs be instituted to include local and minority businesses and in all of its spending. We instituted a policy that said that 40% of all city contracts and procurement would look to obtain this goal. We began to make true investment in communities like we are occupied today here on Murchison Road. We used our planning and our resources to include underserved communities and not exclude them as has been done in the past. Developed policies on infrastructure and investment. We opened doors of collaboration with Fayetteville State University. And thank you, Chancellor, for being a gracious host tonight. PWC and MLK and North Carolina DOT. And over the next five years, thanks to our state delegation members, nearly $200 million will be spent in this community in the next five years. And we, and together, all of that collaboration, we have become the highest percentage of black-owned businesses in the country. And that's something to be proud of. But we are charting a course, not only for black-owned businesses, but for women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, Hispanic, Asian, Native American, and disabled-owned businesses, and most of all, our local businesses. So this term, I will work with my colleagues on the City Council to continue to invest in jobs, working with our universities to train our next generation workforce. But as I prepare to make my final point, I want to bring this issue to bear, and I hope that this will be an area of focus for not only the City Council, but all of our elected officials. Our public health and public safety are connected, in my opinion, to our quality of life. We have a mental health problem here in our community. We can no longer look the other way. If we drive around any major corridor on any given day, we'll see many individuals who need assistance in the mental health space. Continuing to ask our police department to address these issues in and of itself is not the answer. Last year alone, our police department responded to over 4,000 calls related to mental health. That's nearly 350 calls a month, and sometimes they end in tragic situations. My first order of business, I'll be asking the council to institute a mental health co-response team to our police department. Let's not continue debating whose responsibility it is. We all have a role and an obligation to do it. I would also employ our colleagues on the county commission to work to get our mental health facilities back open and functioning to allow individuals to receive the care and the medication that they need to allow them to have a better quality of life. Let's not continue to overburden our hospital emergency rooms, who occupy space, much life needed space, for people with physical and life-threatening illnesses with our mental health issues. And to the city manager and to the team, the city council, let's work for ways to create partnerships with our local health providers. Even though traditionally, this has not been our space, it's time that this becomes a collective effort. We are all elected officials. We work for the same citizens, and it's our goal to make sure that we take care of you. In the words of Dr. King, "The time is always right to do what's right." And finally, as I prepare to take my seat, I believe wholeheartedly in the future of this city, its people, its character, and its diversity, which I've said before, is our greatest asset. So in November, we will present to you, the voters, a request to borrow money for a housing bond to help us with the 20,000 housing shortage that we have in this community, to give people affordable options who go hard and work every day but can't afford to live in our community. We'll also ask for investment in our Police and Fire Departments so that we can continue to expand and make sure that we have adequate coverage to protect our citizens. And finally, we'll continue and ask for investment to improve the quality of our streets and roads, our sidewalks, and to finally do something about our flooding problem. On Monday, I've been asked to attend a conference at the White House about the new climate legislation and the billions of dollars that are available to communities, but they are for the communities who are making investment themselves. And so we will look to leverage those opportunities. What a reflection of an awesome city and a great community. Today, you will see we'll be represented by people of various races, ethnic backgrounds, sex, and religious and creed. And in the words of Henry Ford, "Coming together is just the beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together creates success." Let's be successful. God bless you and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We now like to invite Katherine Keefe Jensen of District 1 to receive her oath of office. It will be administered by the Honorable Claire Hill, Superior Court Judge.
Y'all are family.
I know, come on.
Thank you, Kathy. It's my honor to administer your oath for the third time to one of my best childhood friends. Fourth time, my goodness, fourth time. Time flies. Thank you for all you do for our city.
I, Katherine Keefe Jensen.
I, Katherine Keefe Jensen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As council member for the city of Fayetteville.
As council member of the city of Fayetteville.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Good evening to everyone. I promise I will keep it short, as short as I can. First of all, I would like to thank Judge Claire Hill. Fun fact about us, we were Girl Scouts together out on the north side of town, and we used to travel as families together. So my first year that I got inaugurated in, my brother was the chairman of the county commissioners, and it was a very, very cool moment that he got to swear me in. So Claire has done it for four times now. So before I get started, again, I do want to thank, I want to thank the council that we had, that we're just leaving. The council, and I thank them for letting me serve as their mayor pro tem. The council that we had two years ago went through something that no other council has ever gone through, a pandemic. And I want to thank everybody that was on that council for the work that they did to get us through the pandemic. And I think we've made it out and we're still working through it, but we did it. So thank you. And I do want to thank the mayor because he did have to hear my phone calls quite a few times, and he handled it very well when I got upset. So again, I would like to thank the residents of District 1. I cannot believe how fortunate I am to live in the community in the city that I do. I also have to thank my husband, Jerry. For anybody that was out on the campaign, that has been out on the campaign, you have seen my Jerry and his pink shirt at all times, and he is just as happy as he can be and made friends with everybody. I met with somebody the other day and they said, they were disagreeing with me, and they said, "Well, you know, I like Jerry." I said, "Everybody loves Jerry." I mean, that's just a given. But as a mom, I will tell you, at 5:30 on July 26, I saw four boys get in each of their cars that were loaded with signs in their pink shirts and their pink tents, and their father telling them how they were going to act that day. And they got in the cars and they all left out and left me home so I could have my coffee to go out and campaign for me. I am one of the luckiest moms in the world, and I personally want to thank you in public. Thank you. For those of you that have watched me out on the campaign, Dakari is not here because Dakari started law school on Monday, and his plans were to be here. He is at Campbell, and they are working him really hard, so that comes first. In the eight years on council, I have been through two 500-year floods, a pandemic, social unrest, just to name a few. But on the brighter side, we have revitalized the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. If I have any members right here, our members from the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council that are helping with today. With the mayor's lead, I got involved with the Millennial Council, and I think that Mr. Malik Davis is out there. Could we stand? We have two people. Katherine, are you here? There they are in the back. Right there, I'm sorry, right there. Katherine and Malik. They're doing a great job. We've started Sunday Fun Days at the Woodpeckers, so keep your eye on that. So with that being said, all the great things that we have done, we've been part, I've been part of the building of Segura Stadium, Go Woodpeckers, a $35 million Parks and Bond Recreation Bond. We have had three swimming pools, splash pads, a skateboard park, a soccer complex upgrades, two new senior centers.
City within a district. We have our city hall. We have our VA hospital, our judicial system, our police off, uh, police department, our fire departments. We have it all within District Two. We have our downtown. So it is incumbent of me to ensure that I respect and honor the various diverse lives that come in and out of District Two in this city. You hear a lot of talk of how diverse this city is. Yet we don't talk about how much we must be inclusive to that diversity. And I believe that District Two is what this city offers, inclusivity. Moving forward, I look forward to ensuring that equity is at the forefront of my work. Thank you. And respectfully so. I am only one person. I have only one vote. I cannot do this without you, and I sure as enough can't do without these colleagues of mine. And I would love to see you continue to show up, not when it's just time to celebrate, but when it's time to do the business of the city. That is my ask of you today. This city is a can-do city because we look, we, we trust each other, we care for each other, we show up for each other. Lastly, I want to thank Councilmember Yvonne Kingston and former Councilwoman Tisha Waddell. Because without them, I would have suffered greatly on this council. And that is God, Honest Truth, and of course, God and my parents. But they guided me through so many things. They helped me understand policy. They helped me understand process. And I thank them dearly for their leadership and their service. I also want to thank our city manager and our city attorney for their openness and willingness to get whatever we bring to them done. You will see in most cities that a lot of people, um, struggle with the mayor, manager, city council, forms of government. But I can say here today, I'm very appreciative of the form of government that we have. With that said, I thank y'all for letting me serve y'all again. I look forward to this one year that we have. And I look forward to welcoming and working with the new colleagues that I will, I will, uh, soon be seated with. And, um, thank you again.
At this time, we'd like to invite Mario Benevente to receive the oath of office. It will be administered by the Honorable Tiffany Marie Whitfield, District Court Judge. While they make their way here, I would like to acknowledge Chancellor Allison, Darryl Allison is here. Thank you for your hospitality and hosting this event and for your leadership at the university.
Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. I state your name.
I, Mario Luis Benevente.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
Therewith.
Therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As council member.
As council member.
For the city of Fayetteville.
For the city of Fayetteville.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Fayetteville. I stand here today, the proud son of Miguel and inson Benevente. I stand here as an indomitable golden bull of E Smith High School, class of 2008, and graduate of the North Carolina Central University School of Law. This one is for all the Eagles in the two six. I feel just as grateful today as I did on the evening of July 26th and the morning of August 5th and about six hours ago, when we were told for the third time that six votes held strong and I'd have the honor of serving my neighbors in District Three and all across my hometown as your next city councilman. Thank you to the Moss Collective, Jenny Bell, Melissa Nelson, and Raul Rivera for making our campaign look good. Thank you to Gerard Falls and Cape Fear Indivisible family for doing the real organizing work in this community. Thank you to Ricky Long and NCAAT in Action for their endorsement and ensuring that Asian-Americans across our state have a voice. Thank you to Kimberly and Larice Lynch for always holding me down and never letting me forget what real loyalty means. To everyone in the life-changing mentoring family, Coach Brian and Quentin Tillman, Mark Sweets and Principal Godbolt, to the local leaders who have mentored me, Attorney Adams, Judge King, Mr. Adam Bia, Mr. Oliver Melvin, thank you. And thank you to my campaign staffers, Maria Cantu, Deanna Royal, and Gregory Williams, supremely dedicated volunteers Frank Thompson, Sheila Ryder, Sean McMillan, Sierra McKnight, Antonio Rentenaria, and of course, the brains behind the operation, my campaign manager, Bishop McNeil. Forget what you heard about the other local campaign consultants, because we bit them with the Bishop's Gambit. And Caroline, this victory wouldn't be as sweet without you. On the campaign trail, I'll let my neighbors know that I'm here to represent them the same way I intend to represent my clients. I will be a zealous advocate who will make their desired priorities a reality to the best of my ability. We all want to be safe in our homes. We all want our families and children to be safe when we're out and about. Therefore, we need truly effective public safety policies here in Fayetteville. Not the kind that criminalizes poverty or targets vulnerable communities, because that only perpetuates cycles of violence. For too long, the city has become over-reliant on a single department to solve every problem. Now is the time to work proactively in order to reduce incidents of violent crime, gun violence, and domestic violence before they ever become an emergency. Addressing the 20% poverty rate in Fayetteville as the root issue, rather than having police continue to struggle to, um, manage the symptoms is the only way forward. And when incidents of misconduct do occur, trust in law enforcement is better preserved when there is independent civilian oversight in the form of a review board. The District Three community that I'll be representing directly is one that has always been highly engaged in the city's affairs and produces the most passionate leaders in this city. They are deserving of long overdue investment into the Merchant Road corridor and to secure grocery and pharmacy, sidewalks and pedestrian safety improvements on Rose Hill as well, and adequate support from flood damage as a result of persistent neglect. Harassment from predatory real estate interests engaging in high-pressure sales tactics, targeting senior members of our area will also be addressed swiftly, because we have to stop, we have to fight to stop gentrification efforts now. To all the millennials and next-generation leaders, you are destined to be the future problem solvers of our, of our city. Do good work now with or without the title. I made the decision to live a life of service in line with the words of Dr. King, who said that every man must decide whether he will walk in the light of creative altruism or in the darkness of destructive selfishness. We will make the path forward, uh, we'll mark the path forward every day by walking it. To all the equal justice activists in our community and beyond, never stop fighting for what is right. From my experiences at McCorkle Place in Chapel Hill to marching down Hay Street in Fayetteville, I can draw a direct line from the impact that we all made then to the changes we are about to make now. It's time to trust the people of Fayetteville with the hard truths and take our city back from the corrupt and the oppressors of generations who have kept people down with myths and give it back to you. Power to the people. My campaign for city council officially began May 19th of last year, and my team and I workshopped a number of campaign slogans. Level Up Fayetteville was a second choice because, you know, in the Super Mario games, you're battling every obstacle to get to the next level. So maybe we'll use that one next year. What we ultimately decided on is an imperative, to take action and to always be mindful that tomorrow's never promised. In Korean, it is said, "Chigumi, urie, shiganimida." In Spanish, it's said, "Ahora es nuestro tiempo." So whenever y'all see me around town, you can holler at me and say, "Now is our time."
We'd like to invite DJ Hair, District Four, to receive the oath of office. It will be administered by the Honorable Mike Morgan, North Carolina Supreme Court Associate,
It's wonderful to be back in Fayetteville on such an auspicious occasion, and councilman, thank you for this privilege to administer your affirmation. Please raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I, DJ Hair.
I, DJ Hair.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As council member.
As council member.
For the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
Of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
May Lord your hand. Councilman, congratulations.
If you all don't mind, I'm gonna let Baby Girl stay up here with me. Seems like out of all of these years, I wouldn't be nervous, but I am. Good evening, everyone. First, Baby Girl and I would just like to thank our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for just giving us a very dynamic win to serve our 11th term to the Fayetteville City Council to represent District Four. Many of you already know me, but know our work ethics. So I would like to just take this opportunity and just thank a few people that have helped us along the way. Due to what the mayor has already stated, we already know what ground has been plowed. So we would like to thank the residents of District Four for trusting us with your vote to serve you now going on 21 years. From Murkison Road to Raleigh Road, we have worked aggressively to accomplish community and city goals. There has been times when I haven't dotted every I and I haven't crossed every T, but thank you, citizens of District Four. Thank you, citizens of Fayetteville, that you never gave up on us. And we are just so grateful for once again to be serving you. We have a number of folk tonight that are with us and that are in the audience, and some are looking at us through Zoom and video. But first, I want to give a big shout out to my 91-year-old mother. Many of you know her as Mrs. Hair. It was mom's thought that she would be here tonight, but at the last moment, she says, "Son, I don't think I'm gonna be able to make it." So mom, if you're looking, and I'm pretty sure my sister has the television on, thank you for being with me all of these years. I also like to just honor and thank my fraternity brother, Justice Morgan, for receiving my phone call and without a bat of a eye say, "Yes, sir, I would love to come routine." I also would like to thank many of our, the fraternity, my fraternity brothers with Omega SciFi that came out to the polls with me, stood with me, gave me contributions, supported us, knocked on doors with us. Thank you, team, so much for your support. My family, many of, not all of the family could be with us tonight. We have a few. We have one of our daughters and maybe Pumpkin may be here. Oh, I see a hand wave back there. So, all right, so my brother, he did make it from Moore County. Thanks, brah. And I'm not sure who that is beside you, but I guess it's family. So thank you all for coming. Don't leave. We're gonna take a few pictures before the night is over. I could not stand here this evening without this beautiful lady, and I wanted her to stand with me. I call her, as many of you know, I call her Baby Girl. We are big in social media and, uh, we're technology geeks, at least I am. And 99% of what you see on social media as far as pictures, she is there with me at community meetings. She is writing down questions and complaints that may come up from, uh, the citizens at meetings and taking pictures. So sweetheart, I, first, I just want to thank you. I got something special for you. I want to thank the citizens once again of Fayetteville. You haven't given up on me, even though I've heard during this campaign that you have been there too long. You have served too long. But it's because of the constituents. It's because of the residents. It's because you're building relationships and you're building trust that we continue to come back because they are supporting us. Please know this, that Baby Girl and I will continue to walk the straight and narrow line of morals and ethics. We will represent you well. Wherever you see us, either in Fayetteville or any place in the globe, we will represent you well, and you will not ever be ashamed of us. And we thank you for continuing to support us all of these years.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to invite Johnny Dawkins, District Five, to receive the oath of office. It will be administered by the Honorable Stephen Stokes, District Court Judge. While they make their way here to this podium, I also like to recognize, is Dr. Conley still here? Marvin Conley? He had to leave?
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Johnny Dawkins.
I, Johnny Dawkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As council member.
As council member.
For the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
For the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Good evening. Thank you, Judge. Judge Stokes, Florida State University Seminoles undergraduate, Florida State University Law School graduate, a good man, joined the Army, 82nd Airborne, HUA, airborne. And I think it was Mayor Pro Tem that said, "We're going to do even more with Fort Bragg." And I appreciate that, Mayor Pro Tem. Goodness, yeah, thank the Lord above. Without him, none of this would be possible. In 10 days, that young lady you saw with me will be celebrating our 40th wedding anniversary. Thank you, baby. Doggone it, Brother Hair, you bring the flowers. Doggo, I forgot the flowers. So I'll get a chance to do something for her in 10 days. Maybe we'll go out to dinner, honey. My son couldn't be here. He's running after Johnny Lee Dawkins the fifth, and who's two and a half, and he is in his terrible twos. So let me warn you, grandparenting is amazing, but goodness gracious, I just hope you do it while you're young, because they will wear you out. And of course, Palmer, who is five months. My sister's normally here, and she is in UNC Chapel Hill Hospital with her daughter, my niece, who gave birth to her second little girl today. So I'm a great, yes, thank you. I'm a great uncle again. And so when I, when I correspond with her, my nephew went to Carolina, my niece went to Carolina, my son went to state, daughter to High Point University. But so when I, when I correspond with my niece and nephew, I go capital U, capital N, capital C, and then little L, little E. So Uncle Johnny, and they love that. So, but I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my granddaddy for getting all this started in 1948, when he won a seat in North Carolina House, and then again in 50, and then he had a heart attack at age 43 in 1951, so I never got to meet him. But one day, I believe, our faith is we will be together again. My dad, J.L. Junior, longest-serving mayor in the history of Fayetteville, although I think this mayor here, Mike, could beat that string. Goodness gracious, I said, "I don't want that job, brother. That's your job. That's your job." And I think, I thank our, our new council members looking forward to working with you, and those that are getting ready to come up here, and those that we've been together, Ms. Ingram, and of course, Brother Hair. Brother Hair, for those of you all don't know, as of today, Councilman DJ Hair is the dean of the Fayetteville City Council. So much respect to you, Brother Hair. It was Bill Crisp, and we lost, and we lost council member, as we called him, Sergeant Major Crisp, and a great man, and that's why that senior center out west is named for him. So thank you, Fayetteville State, for hosting us again, and we appreciate that. Thank you to the citizens for voting for us. And we are, as Dad said, "Son, the Lord gave you two ears and one mouth. Use them proportionally." And I, that is my goal every single day. Great-grandmama, Mama Dawkins, at 81, and died in 1971. I was a little fella, but the one thing, there's two things I will always remember. She didn't have very good breath, and when she hugged me. Woo! Lord have mercy. She started Emmanuel Baptist Church. Now, those of you that know Hillsborough Street, at the end of Hillsborough Street near Ramsey is Emmanuel Baptist Church. My great-grandmother, a female in 1954, 55, started that church. This is a female starting a Southern Baptist church. She was tough. Thank the good Lord for her. She drank hot water. She never drank caffeine in her life. She drank, she would have hot water boiling, and she'd drink it and say, "Now, son, you want a little something to drink?" I said, "No, grandmama, I'm, I'm fine. I'm fine." But she said, "Son, you learn something new every single day," and, and that is something else that I live by. And then, um, my dad, the other thing he taught me, oh, and my daughter, she is, she couldn't be here tonight, she's working. She's an emergency room nurse at Wake Med. Wow. Hero. And of course, she's, some of these members know, she's a 24-year brain tumor survivor, chemotherapy, two brain surgeries, three eye surgeries, radiation. The Lord left her here for a reason, and I tell her every day when we chat, "The Lord left you here to, to do His will for others, to help take care of others and give them hope." And as she tells me, and the mayor brought this up, the mental health issue is a big deal. It is a big deal. Over half of the patients she has to deal with are mental. Just last week, an emergency room nurse got assaulted by a mental health patient. So yes, we gotta do something. All right. Thank you for everything. Dad also said, he said, "Son, be brief, be sincere, and be seated."
His dad was something else. All right. At this time, we'd like to invite Derek Thompson, District Six, to receive the oath of office. It will be administered. It will be administered by Mrs. Tiffany Evans, No Republic. You guys take the oath first.
Brother Derek, thank you for allowing me to administer your oath of office. As a fellow church member and friend, congratulate-
and say, they can say, "Well done, my son." And that first is my father, who is, my father who is here, my two brothers, Kenny and Benny, my Aunt Eva and Uncle Steve, Mr. Deadwaller, my English school teacher, I'm not gonna tell you what year, Mr. Kenny Lane, Mr. Dan Sutton, Mr. Boddy, Mr. Tall, Mr. Leonard, Mrs. Edwards, Mr. Donald Wilson Senior, Mr. Franklin Harwell, and Mr. Donald Ripley Junior. I can also say that just yesterday, I celebrated my thirty-seventh wedding anniversary with the love of my wife, Francine. I want to say thank you to her for allowing me to endure this journey. I could not do it without her. I want to thank my two wonderful kids, Derrick, Michelle, my two grandkids, Eloise and Emery. Eloise is my campaign manager. She stuck with me my entire side, and she's only five years old. She already had her little line recited now. My campaign staff. Being new to politics, only thing I could depend on was family and friends. Everybody who worked with me was a friend of mine, from Pat to DJ, to Pastor Woodley, to Tom, to Fudgy, who's out here in the crowd, and to anybody else that I missed. I thank y'all for walking those neighborhoods with me. I thank y'all for campaigning with me. I thank you for supporting me, and most of all, I thank you for your continuously prayers. A special thanks to a wonderful man, former Councilman Chris Davis, who saw enough in me to say, "Hey, I think you can do this." To my HOA family, to Ray Conda, who supported me immensely financially and materially and spiritually. I'm always going to be indebted to you guys. A lot of people, to be honest with you, a lot of people didn't believe I was going to make it this far. I had a foundation, being retired military, being, working for the post office in my own district. I made connections with individuals. Somebody asked me back there, "How are we going to bring diversity back into the council? How are we going to bring diversity back into the city?" Well, the work starts by knocking on doors. You can't have the people come to you, you have to go to the people. You can sit up here and have your own agenda, but don't let it be your agenda, let it be the agenda of the people. If you, if you want to, and I'm not talking about anybody, but I don't want council to be a III. I am going to be community, neighborhood, district, city. We need to do all we can to move, and I hate to be long-winded, but a lot of people don't realize what they have. Me being from the city of Philadelphia, being born and raised, I love Fayetteville. Fayetteville is almost like heaven to me. Y'all don't realize some of the great things that are going on here, and I will never go back to Philadelphia. Let me just say that I am humbled, my family came from Philadelphia to be here with me. My eighty-seven-year-old mother, who sits over here, made the trip. I don't know how more I can be thankful, but I will do all I can for District Six, for this Can Do City, to move city Fayetteville forward. I'm going to end with a quote, and if y'all don't know me and my prayer, I'm a prayer warrior. This is what I always like to say, "Here I am, O Lord, a humble and faithful servant. Use me." God bless you.
I was saying hi to my homeboy, I didn't realize he was in Philadelphia. Family is here, WDASFM. Butterball, Georgie Woods, Alany High School, he went to West Philly, but that's okay. I went to the big old, not Overbrook. It's good to have home people here, and as a matter of fact, there's a lot of folks from Philadelphia here. I was stationed at Fort Bragg back in 1978, and I never left, so this is home for me too. So this is a great city to live and work and raise a family. Brenda McNair, District Seven. She will be receiving the oath of honor from the Honorable Gail Adams, Superior Court Judge. Would everyone in the audience please come up on the stage? But look, this is how you do it. You have to have family support, so give them a round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. The whole family's up here.
I think they want us in like certain spots, I don't know, because of how they're taking pictures.
Mr. Trapp.
Good evening. If you would please raise your right hand, place your left hand on the Bible, and repeat after me. I, Brenda McNair.
I, Brenda McNair.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As council member.
As council member.
For the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
For the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, awesome. I want to thank you guys for allowing me to stand before you today. First of all, I want to give honor to God, who is first and always the number one in my life, is my God, gives me direction from day to day. As you guys saw, my family, twelve of those, my grandchildren, one of the reasons that I decided to run for this office and leave a legacy to them. I want to thank my mom, my dad, and my grandmother, which are no longer with us, but I know that they are smiling down on me right now, because I blame them for this political run right now, because they love politics. I want to thank District Seven, all the citizens and the help that I had to make this happen. I truly believe that I have made history. I truly believe that this is God's appointed time for me. I truly believe that I am a hard-working woman. I am a business owner, and I have been for thirty-five years, and not only a businesswoman, I am a family-oriented woman. And I love my family, I love my neighbors, I love my community, and I love my church. My pastor is here, Pastor Dr. Tillit. I'll never forget, on Sunday, his favorite line before he preaches, "Vote." And it was so funny, that with just that echo from him helped me land here. Now, I'm just that, I have my sisters, my brothers, my two sons, and I can't forget this gentleman. He said he was not my campaign manager, but however, he was my professional advisor. I didn't have a campaign manager. I did not, but he was there, and my team was there. I heard others say we was in the hot sun for a long time. I was there from six o'clock in the morning until closing at the polls. Seventeen days straight. That's because I'm very serious, serious about being a councilwoman, a councilmember for the city of Fayetteville. I'm very serious about bringing about change to our community. I'm very serious about bringing about change to individuals. I'm very serious about spreading love and joy and bringing everyone together. I'm very serious about being non-biased. I signed up to work for all the citizens of Fayetteville. And I'm looking forward to working with every council member. The mayor, I tell him all the time, "He better treat me right, because Micah's my friend." Yes, Micah is my friend. I want to thank my special friend Willie Bridges for being here with me today. And if you guys don't mind, I would like for, I mean, everyone that came to support me to stand and, recognize them right now. I can't call everybody names, but they stuck by me. Let you guys know that I love you. I don't like to talk about negative things. I like to spread joy and love and peace. There's no way that I can serve on this board with an unclean heart. There's no way. So, if you take anything from me today, take the love of God that's in my heart and share it with someone next to you when you go home, you're home, and out into the community. I am here to work for the people. I am here to find out what is on your mind. It's not about my agenda, it's about the agenda of the city of Fayetteville and District Seven. I plan to do my best, so help me God.
We now would like to invite Courtney Banks-McLaughlin, District Eight. The oath of office will be administered by Mayor Kia Anthony of the town of Spring Lake. And this, this needs a battery, or we can switch a mic.
I will not stand before you so long. By me being in District Eight, we've been hearing so many other individuals before us, and I'm sure everybody's proud.
The mayor, I tell him all the time, he better treat me right because Micah is my friend.[314.24][314.27](laughter) Yes, Micah is my friend. I want to thank my special friend Willie Bridges for being here with me today. And if you guys don't mind, I would like for, I mean, everyone that came to support me to stand and recognize them right now. I can't call everybody names, but they stuck by me.[344.04][344.07](applause) Let you guys know that I love you. I don't like to talk about negative things. I like to spread joy and love and peace. There's no way that I can serve on this board with an unclean heart. There's no way. So if you take anything from me today, take the love of God that's in my heart and share it with someone next to you when you go home, you're home, and out into the community. I am here to work for the people. I am here to find out what is on your mind. It's not about my agenda. It's about the agenda of the city of Fayetteville and District 7. I plan to do my best, so help me God.[410.44][410.47](applause)
We now would like to invite Courtney Banks-McLaughlin, District 8.[429.44][429.47](applause) The oath of office will be administered by Mayor Kia Anthony of the town of Spring Lake. And this needs a battery, or we can switch a mic.
Good afternoon. I will not stand before you so long. By me being in District 8, we've been hearing so many other individuals before us, and I'm sure everybody's probably hungry, have to go to the restroom.[601.72][601.75](laughter) First and foremost, I do want to thank God for giving me the strength and courage to serve District 8. Mayor Kia Anthony, I thank you. I reached out to you so last-minute, and you agreed to come and do the oath, so I truly thank you for being here with me tonight. I know many people say when you get into politics, you have to have this tough skin, you have to be this rough, tough person. But what I found that in order to be effective, to be an effective leader, you have to have a heart, you have to be for the people. You're serving the people, so you have to be able to communicate with them. And when they come to you with issues, you want to be able to serve them because that is what we are elected to do. And that's what I will continue to do for the residents of District 8, and not only residents of District 8, the city as a whole. To the residents of District 8, I am humbly, humbly, humbly thank you, thankful for being able to serve you a second term. Not sure if many of you knew that District 8 was one of the largest districts in the city. Because of the census, we had to redistrict, which that pulled some of my constituents and either it pushed them to either District 4, District 6, and District 7. And despite all of that, we were at 79.99% of the votes. So that lets me know, despite all of that with the redistricting, that so many people still support me in District 8. So I thank you for that.[725.54][725.57](applause) To my community leaders, you all, I tell you all the time, you are my backbone. You hold me accountable. And I encourage every resident to do the same with your councilmember and any elected officials. Hold them accountable, gain that relationship with them, build that trust. So when you have issues, you know who to contact. So make sure you know who represents you. To my husband, I didn't forget about you, baby. I thank God for you every single day. It really takes a lot. I want to...[769.14][769.17](applause) When most of you see me, you see him. That's how supportive my husband is. And when you in politics in these positions, you need that support system. So honey, I thank you for being that support system, for being that ear. Sometimes when I'm frustrated or overwhelmed, you make me smile and laugh. So I truly appreciate you.[796.24][796.27](applause) To my daughters, Coriana, London, and Lauren, mommy, I love you. I thank you all for being supportive because being a councilmember consists of long meetings.
Right.
Long meetings, and not just council meetings, community watch meetings, different events, going to meet constituents. And it takes a lot, and I thank my kids for just being supportive. The other day, my five-year-old ran up to me, and she said, "Mommy, I am so proud of you," and gave me a hug. And that meant so much to me because, you know, we have to realize our children see what we do. They monitor, they mimic us. And for her to do that, that just touched me in a special place. And I say to the newly-elected, well, now our councilmembers too, be mindful of what you say, be mindful of what you do. You never know who's watching you, you never know who's wanting or who wanted to follow into your footsteps and who admire you. So be mindful of, again, what you say and what you do. My son, my oldest son Gregory, he cannot be here today. He is currently in boot camp. That's my oldest baby. He's in boot camp for the Navy. I do, yeah. So I just want him to know that I am super proud of him and that you are almost there to the finish point. So just keep pushing, and you'll be there. To my mom and my family, thank you all for traveling. My aunt from Michigan to be here with me today. And my family, we have so many strong, God-fearing women. My aunt, the one that actually held the Bible for me. Try not to get emotional. When I was young, I probably was, I want to say, in middle school, and she gifted me my first Bible. And that is the first, that's the Bible that when I was, when I did the swearing-in back in 2019, I had that same Bible. And today, I'm so happy that she was here today to hold that very same Bible that she gave to me when I was in middle school. So thank you for that.[949.14][949.17](applause) I do want everyone to know, this inauguration is not about me. It's about each and every person in District 8, everybody in the city who came out and voted, whether you were in District 8 or not, just being able to come out and vote because it's so important. People don't realize, we are the policymakers. We make decisions for this city. So people, please, please come out and vote. For you guys that don't know, voting is right around the corner, November. So make sure you come out and vote for election. Not for city council, that's for the state, but and commissioners and Board of Education. So please make sure you come out and use your vote, your voice to count. Being a councilmember consists of many long days, nights. And you all will see that, the newly-elected, you will see that very soon. But I just encourage you to remain focused, work for the people, pray before you come to the council meetings because you will need it. And you also want to make sure you doing what's right for the city. For those who are watching or that's sitting here today who have a goal or something in their heart that they want to do, I encourage you to pursue it. Today, get up, whatever it is in your heart that you want to do, do it. Pray, have faith, and follow that path that God will instruct you to follow. So please, please do that. Because if not, you'll just, so many years ago by, it'd be one of those, I wish I should've, could've done it. So if there's something in your heart, go out and deal with it. I do want to also thank everybody that played a role in my campaign. My campaign manager, Tracy Morrison. Listen. Like I mentioned before, you definitely have to have a support system. Tracy, you were, I mean, we hit these neighborhoods like we did in 2019, and here we are again. So I thank you for motivating me, for pushing me, and also for our prayer circles. Those come in handy. If y'all don't have a prayer circle, you might need to get one. To my mommy, thank you for coming out. You invested and poured so much into me. I truly appreciate you. I love you. To the newly-elected, congratulations. I look forward to collaborating with you and working beside you so that we can take our city to another level. Before I close, I do want to also acknowledge other individuals that helped me get this far, my pastors, my sororors, my PHA family, anybody that played a role in getting me here, whether it was financially, through prayers, I truly appreciate you. Now, as we celebrate today, we are also doing the business of the city. Our first vote this afternoon would be appointing the mayor pro temp. I am seeking support from each and every one of my colleagues into appointing me the next mayor pro temp. So I hope you... And I do want to say, while being on council, I have always been professional. I've always been transparent, and I've always worked for the people. So use your vote wisely.[1179.81][1179.83](laughter) And again, thank you all for being here today. Congratulations to you all, and let's get to work.[1189.24][1189.27](applause)
Right now, we'd like to invite Dino Hondros, District 9, to receive the oath of office. The Honorable Cole Jordan District Court Judge will be administering the oath.[1207.74][1207.77](audience clapping) Check, check, check.
Raise your right hand on the floor and raise your right. Repeat after me. I, Dino Hondros.
Hi, Dino Hondros.
Do solemnly swear.
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
Y'all support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As council member.
As council member.
For the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
For the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. First and foremost, all glory and thanks go to God. Without Him, none of this is possible. My lovely wife, and also my tech department, my son James, and my videographer. So many people to name. Without our supporters, our volunteers, our contributors, and most importantly, the voters, we wouldn't be here. It's a true team effort. We really didn't have a campaign manager, but we assembled a great team from the Board of Realtors, home builders, and just so many people that supported us, that got us to where we are today. I had a chance to meet the mayor several times, and my colleagues, both new and old on council, heard a lot of great ideas. I think we have a good group, and we have a lot of great ideas and a short time to get them done. So with God's will, we'll try to make as much happen as we can.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's have a round of applause for our city council and the mayor of Fayetteville.[1397.74][1397.77](applause)
Thank you again, and thank you, Mr. Baze. Let's give him a round of applause for gracious host today.[1414.62][1414.65](applause) All right, so with that, I'll call our meeting to order. Item 2.0 is the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve, mayor.
This is a motion by Councilmember Hare. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Benevente. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor, show of hands, motion to approve the agenda. Madam Clerk, is unanimous. Of those voting, item 3.01, Councilman Hare.
Yes, sir. Motion on the floor, mayor, to elect Mayor Pro Tem Johnny L. Dawkins.
This is a motion by Councilmember Hare. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on the motion? All right, those in favor?
Yes, there's discussion.
Councilman Benevente.
On matters of protocol and process, my constituents are going to demand compromise and reasonable concession. On matters of principle, they're going to demand that I speak truth to power. Fellow members of council, we also heard that there is another nominee who is putting her name into the mayor pro temp race. Hopefully, she deserves equal consideration. Mr. Dawkins, in the past, you know, has shown disdain for police reform activists who presented to council, has been censured for conduct towards other members, and demanded an apology before apologizing to Councilmember Kinston, has made racially discriminatory remarks towards Asian-Americans in April of 2020 and subsequent meetings during a time when across this country, people who look like me were being beaten as a result of targeted blame and harmful rhetoric.
All right, thank you. Any others?[1515.62][1515.65](applause) All right, council, any other discussion on the motion? All right, those in favor, the motion on the floor by Councilman Hare, seconded by Councilmember Thompson to nominate Councilmember Dawkins. As mayor pro temp, okay, Councilman Hondros. You had discussion? Oh, okay. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Yes, I would like to see if he would amend that to include myself to that motion as far as being appointed for mayor pro temp.
To nominate, to, uh, Councilmember Hare has asked to do a friendly amendment to nominate two people for one position. Not sure how to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I believe process...
Hold on one second.
I believe process.
I'm coming, Councilmember Ingram.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, that's out of the protocol.
Yeah, well...
Ever been familiar with all of these years, so...
Well, is this an ask to, a friendly amendment? If it's not accepted, then we have a motion on the floor, discussion. Councilmember Ingram.
Mr. Mayor, I remember my comment. That was a point of order for process. As Councilmember Hare has cleared that of, it would allow for the vote, which has properly been seconded to take place. Can you speak?
So you're calling for the vote, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, all right. Discussion is ended. Those in favor of the motion, show of hands.
Can she, I couldn't hear her down here.
Yeah, we're voting, we're voting now, Councilmember. All right, let me call out the votes, please. So this is for the Hare-Thompson motion. Those in favor of that motion, before we dispose of it? Okay, show of hands, the original motion?
Mayor, I asked if he would amend it, did he agree?
He did not do the friendly amendment, yes, ma'am. All right, so show of hands, those in favor of the motion, Thompson, Hare motion. All right, those in voting in favor, Councilmember Hondros. Show of hands, y'all. Those in favor of the motion, Councilmember Hondros, Dawkins, Hare, Jensen. Those opposed? Councilmember McNair, Banks-McLaughlin, Benevente, and Ingram. All right, Madam Clerk, do you have a count on that? He made the second on it.
I made the second nomination.
6-4.
6-4.
So motion carries. All right, motion carries. Item 3.02, the original, the opening address was done at the beginning. And so we'll move to item 3.03. We asked Pastor Fletcher from the Manor Church if he would come for the benediction.
Shall we pray? If you bow with me, Lord, we thank you so much for the individuals who have signed up to serve our great city. Lord, we pray for wisdom for them. We pray for protection for their families. Lord, I thank you for each and every family sacrificing a loved one on this stage to serve our city. Lord, we pray that you would bless each and every family member associated with all of these up on the stage. And Lord, I pray for wisdom for each of them as they lead. I pray that you would guide them, pray that you would bless them. We pray for your blessing to be on our city. We pray that we would be a light to other cities as we continue to chart a path forward. Lord, we thank you for where we come from, but Lord, we ask for the future and the plans that you have for us. We thank you for our city, thank you for those that are serving our city. We ask for your blessing in your hand to be on them, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing so we can retire the colors before we adjourn the meeting.
Sir, permission to retire the colors. Take charge, retire the colors. Forward, march. Forward, march.
Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting is adjourned. Please join us in the lobby for some refreshments.